2021 Board of Education Regular Meeting, called order and roll call, please.
Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Robbins.
Here.
Mrs. Edder.
Here.
Mr. Namon.
Here.
Mr. Shuker.
Here, five present, zero absent.
On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. The Board of Education values and encourages public comment on education issues. Anyone having an interest in the actions of the Board may participate during the public comments portion of the meeting. Please identify yourself on the Board sign-in sheet. A copy of the Board meeting agenda is available for review on our school district website. Please silence your cell phones during the meeting. At this time, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Namon.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Souchacki. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Namon.
Aye.
Mr. Souchacki.
Aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Edder.
Aye.
Mrs. Shuker.
Aye. Motion passes five zero, next up, public comments. And I don't know where, there are none. Um, next up, presentations.
We're gonna start off with, um, we're going off script already, so we just approve the agenda as we're going off the agenda. Um, I'd like to start off with a recognition, um, for Mr. Namon. And Joe, this has, uh, to honor your service to the Board of Education, your guidance and direction as a Board member, has strengthened the bond between community and school. Joe Namen, Cog Heights Schools, 2017, 2021. Joe, I can't thank you enough for your service to the district. I, uh, at, at superintendent's meetings, I would tell people, uh, that I have the best Board of Education to work for because everybody comes from a little bit different place and it makes it such a great group to work for and that, uh, this Board is student-centered, puts students first in their decision-making process. You have been a very integral part of that these last four years, Joe. And Stephanie, we want to welcome you aboard, but Joe, you're gonna be missed. And I thank you for everything that you've done for myself and the district and the students at Cog Heights Schools. And Lindy was gonna chime in too.
I just wanna add, it has been such a good time with you, Joe. I mean, honestly, just the amount of expertise and knowledge you share, um, just the compassion and heart that you have. And, um, it's just been an honor being your colleague for the last four years and you're gonna be missed, but hopefully you'll stay around and won't go too far and join some committees.
Full call away.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much.
I guess.
Ditto for me, too.
Get your own gavel.
Oh, my God. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Oh, thanks, thank you.
And thank you too, Joe, for your family, for all the sacrifices they've made in this process.
No, I, I, I actually, I have some reflections, too, that I can wait till the, to the, uh, to the end, if you'd like.
Whatever you wanna do, are you feeling it right now?
I can feel it right now, if you'd like. Okay, um, I can't, I can't thank you all enough. I mean, that's, this is, this is great, so, um, I, I've enjoyed my time on the school board, for sure. Um, so, in the summer reflections, I, during the summer of 2017, I was approached by a member of the community, uh, with the question of, did you ever consider running for the Board of Education at Cog Heights? So at that time, I, I never really considered running for a public position or even a Board of Education, but the thought of, um, you know, serving on the Board of Education, um, would help to, you know, would help to shape the, um, and ensure that our community's, um, children receive a proper education was very appealing to me at that time. So, um, it kind of really aligned with a lot of my values, um, and beliefs surrounding the, uh, continuing education, the community, and helping to shape the direction of the school district. Um, so the last four years, um, have, um, brought out a wide range of emotions from the entire district in different ways, from, uh, graduation ceremonies to, uh, student and teacher of the month recognitions, um, teacher of the year awards, uh, that were received by our educators, uh, A-rated, um, A-ratings that our school district have received, um, championship runs by our athletic teams, um, dedications to our distinguished alumni, and also a, um, a course of, um, you know, of course, we were in like a worldwide pandemic and debates regarding cultural sensitivity. As I reflect on the four years, I discovered that, um, I think that I, and I, what I already knew was about everybody's deep caring and passion for the school district, um, and this, this comes from everyone, um, so our administrators, our school leaders, our board, our teachers, and the community itself. Um, but the emotion and the passion about this district has been exhibited in many different ways. However, I will remember most of my time at Cog Heights as Board of Education are, Mr. Evans, your unwavering late leadership of the district through the unprecedented times. Mr. Muccio, your passion for spreadsheets. And your meticulous detail that goes into every calculation and estimate in our forecasts, our budgets, and measurements against those documents. Uh, these are some of the best I've ever seen. Uh, Mr. Young, your, um, your love of analytics and the presentations to improve our district policies and procedures. Mr. Jantovich, Mrs. Houtchen, um, your, um, your daily running of the school's activities, whether through, you know, through remote learning or in-class learning has been exceptional. Uh, your passion of your, the district comes through and every single time I see you present the student of the month to all, all the kids. Uh, Mrs. Shuker.
Oh, you're not gonna make this person.
Oh, yeah. Mrs. Shuker, Mr. Robbins, uh, Mr. Souchacki, uh, Mrs. Edder, uh, you're an inspiration to the district and your dedication, your time, your energy in handling tough situations through adversity is unprecedented. You reasonably assess every situation, come to a logical conclusion, always in the best interest of the students, and I'm, I'm really glad that we are able to do all these things together. Of all the teachers who, um, who taught the students, using all these different modalities, um, and to continue our, to educate our, our kids during the, uh, these unprecedented times unmatched by anyone. So I'm very grateful to each and every one of you, and I'm stepping off the Board of, the Board of Education with a greater appreciation of who you are, uh, what you believe in, your commitments and passions at the school district, and have and always would consider you part of my extended family. Lastly, I would like to welcome Stephanie to the district and to the, and to the Board. So thank you for taking on this important role in our district. It's, um, you know, it's a very important role. I know you do a great job. So again, thank you for the great four years. Keep up the great work for the district and lastly, and always, do everything in the, in the best interest of the kids, and that should be in the forefront of every decision. So thank you very much.
Aye. You could talk, Mr. Evans.
Well, okay, uh, Mark and Jason, you get to follow that up. We have, uh, GPD here to, to deliver a presentation about our fire alarm improvement project. And just a little side note, as, as we venture into permanent improvement and developing plans, uh, GPD, um, will be at our side through this process. They've been very, uh, important to get us to where we're at right now. Uh, we know that there's still a long way to go, but the, the Jason and, and Mark, we wanna first and foremost, thank you for the work that you put in, uh, to this point, and we certainly look forward to working with you for many years to come as we start to take care of these beautiful aging buildings and keep them beautiful, uh, as we do, and safe. Thank you.
Can I add just a really quick side note?
Sure.
And thank you for sticking with us. I know this, like, pandemic thing kinda put plans on hold and stuff, so just thank you for your patience with us.
What I would still suggest you is keep applying to our foundation for grants.
Okay.
And we've given to you in the past, keep applying because you're on our list.
Okay.
We've come up with some creative stuff. I mean, we did it during the pandemic because people had to spend a lot of money on things that they'd never expected they were gonna spend on. But our grant cycle starts, believe, just right after this. So talk to your teachers about creative things that they wanna do. I can promise you, you'll get a grant.
Mr. Jantovich and Mrs. Houtchen are tripping over each other right now. Joyce may be, Joyce may be submittable for your presentation.
As you're aware, you can get more than one. I believe what the committee, and I'm not on the committee, I believe what the committee likes probably the most, anywhere from a thousand to twenty thousand. I believe they like, like giving out three or four in the three to five thousand dollar range. I think they like those the best, but I'm not on that committee, so I have no choice. If you throw in five or six of them, you have a chance to get up to twenty, a few different ones.
That's great. Thank you.
All right, well.
Yeah, love for you, honey.
Yeah.
I, we'll go through the, uh, put a little, uh, presentation together, kinda just, uh, I guess do a little bit of a recap and maybe Stephanie for you, it'll be a little bit of an introduction as well. So as a, as a summary, um, in, in 2019, we did a full building assessment of, of the schools and, and including the, uh, the truck stores, so all of the buildings that are part of the campus and just develop, you know, a list of, um, of improvements that we see that could be, um, brought to the district and, and, you know, in terms of best practices from, from a, a building maintenance standpoint. And, uh, one of the items that came up out of that, that facilities assessment is, is an upgrade to the, the fire alarm systems. You know, I, I know this is something that's been on the administration's sort of radar for a while now, knowing that it's, um, it's getting, or it's past its useful life and, uh, you know, it's constantly causing, um, uh, alarms, false alarms and troubles that, you know, that the, the maintenance staff has to, to address, so. So I'll just go over that, you know, kinda the summary of the, of the project. Um, what we'll share with you too is what, what we'll call our, our opinion of probable costs. So this is, um, you know, kind of, uh, based on today's market where we, we see the, um, the pricing for the project. Obviously, it's something that we would, um, draw up and, and bid out and get competitive bids, you know, per the ORC. Um, but this is at least where we see it based on, you know, recent projects that we've done. And then ultimately, you know, we're here, uh, seeking approval for the, for that aspect of it, for the, the design and engineering of it so that we could go out for a bid, but, you know, obviously that encompasses a larger project, so we're gonna kinda review that as a whole. So, uh, you know, just as a, as a, as a summary, we have, um, the various buildings that are on the campus. Um, the way the, the project is currently, or the, uh, the alarm systems are currently situated, we have a system for the elementary building, we have a combined one for the middle school and high school, and then there's another small fire alarm system associated with the truck storage building. And all of those are, are about the same in age and, and, uh, you know, the proposal that we're, um, or the recommendation that we're making is to replace all of those collectively. So, um, that is replacement of the, of the main panel and then a lot, for the most part, we also have to upgrade the devices that go along with it so that's the, it's the fire alarm monitoring, monitoring devices associated with that fire alarm system. These are, you know, as a, kind of a reminder, some of the, the photos, uh, that we gathered from our, our field assessments, some of the existing conditions as it, as it relates. You know, again, the systems are from 91 and, and typically we only get about 30 years if we're lucky out of a system, so we're, you know, doing pretty good from that standpoint. But, um, uh, it's just, uh, you know, it's a, it's become to the point and, you know, Mr. Evans or Muccio, if you'd like to jump in at any time and share any of your stories with the, but it's, it's certainly become, you know, a, a condition where, um, the, the false alarms, you know, we just don't want it to, to get to the point where it's just so common that we, we miss an actual alarm associated with it.
The alarm company's making great progress. The last two, two o'clock in the morning calls, I got both people pronounce Kaia Hager correctly, so I was very impressed with that.
Not impressed that whether, that they're, that they've actually figured it out.
Last, as my rec, one of them was last night.
So, you know, some of the, the concerns associated with the, the existing systems, you know, I've touched on it, the excessive false alarms that, that we're realizing, um, that, that's created unnecessary, um, at the time, site visits from the fire department as well, which is obviously then pooling resources from, from another potential, uh, safety opportunity. You know, as the, as the unreliable, as the system becomes more unreliable, there's a chance where it gets to the point where we maybe even have to start to do fire watches and, and again, that's a very expensive proposition. And then just replacement of some of the, the pieces is becoming, would be, become more difficult. So it's, again, it's just, um, something that's, uh, with this kind of age, it's, it's pretty common that it gets up for replacement. So this is the, uh, the, the cost summary that we put together. The, uh, I guess if you wanna reference it back to what we had in our facilities assessment from a, from a budgeting standpoint that was done in 2019, it, this is more, this is a, you know, at a higher rate than what it is, and that's based just on fact of, of where the market conditions are right now. The pricing that I've put in here aligns with quotes that we just recently got for, um, a, a pretty sizable fire alarm replacement project as well for a library system. Um, so I utilize that as a standpoint. It's, it's not actually to the extent of, you know, if we would, uh, follow this entire program here, but it, it, I think it's a, it's a, a good benchmark to use from a, from a budgeting standpoint. And then just to, again, just to give it still a little bit of, you know, when we present to the Board, we like to present you kind of the all-in number, you know, provide some contingencies, again, with it being an existing building and a renovation, so, um, so that's what we apply to the, to the unit costs as well, just, um, as a, um, as a safety factor, I guess, in terms of budgeting from your standpoint.
Depending on your side, I would hope we can get some kind of, and then we're gonna, hopefully, we're gonna get a better price than the library room that's not, not as large as this is, right?
No, it totaled probably about seventy-five thousand square feet on that one, so.
The larger the project, the economy of scale takes it, the pricing down. But, you know, Jason and I, unfortunately, Jason and I are having some very uncomfortable conversations with clients because the market right now is so volatile that, and you don't know what it is. You know, it was lumber before, now it's steel, now it's roof insulation, electrical, it was PVC. I mean, it's from day to day, you don't know what, which one is gonna be the bad one to deal with. So we're just throwing it out there, we wanna play safe, we don't wanna give you a number that we don't believe we can meet. But here's, here's what I would also tell you, that I'm advising clients, if we put it out and we don't think that, uh, we're getting the number that we want, we could always reject the bids and bid it a few months later and see if the prices come back. We're not locked in to accept any bid that we don't believe.
So I thought I saw in the, one of the previous slides, maybe, that the cost was two dollars and twenty-five cents per square feet, and here I see it's three dollars and five cents. Is that what you're saying?
The two, the, that, the previous number that you referenced, that was what we had in the facilities assessment report.
Okay.
And that was, again, that was the, the OCCs, you know, put their guidelines in terms of what the, the pricing is at that time, and, and that references from, from 2019, but.
Okay, so these are what we think the market is now?
This is, this is, yeah, this is pulled directly, again, from a, a recent bid. It was just a month ago that we received pricing for, you know, it's, it was straight fire alarm replacement project, there was nothing else that was associated with it, and that was, you know, from a unit standpoint, that's what this total.
Jason, you might wanna refresh the Board's memory about the OCCC pricing and how that comes about and that, you know, that just kinda pulling a number out of the air with that number's kind of a.
Yeah, so, uh, each year they put out a, a cost set, they call it, that, um, you know, utilizing kind of all of the, the data from the school projects that they have and, and the bids, you know, they put out, uh, a, a cost set and it breaks down each element to the building, you know, especially the major systems, and it provides us what we should, you know, recommend in terms of a budget for, for these types of things. And fire alarm replacement is one specific one that they, they have broken out, and that's what we utilized, you know, for the, um, the budget information that we did with the facilities assessment. Um, but again, over time, we, you know, we do expect inflation's gonna raise prices, but in addition to that, you know, the current market is also, um, and the supply chain issues is playing some impact on, on the subcontractor bids that we see as well. So, um, you know, that's, this, fortunately, we have, you know, something to compare to that was bid during that kind of environment, so I think this is a safe number to, to utilize as a, um, a plug and number to go forward.
Just have a question for you. Um, could you please speak on if, you know, it's a high ticket price that we have that we're looking at? If we wanted to just isolate, let's say, for example, the high school, middle school, and maybe the pool facility, how would that affect the overall project? Could we split it up? Could we do it in phases?
Yeah, I, I think that's certainly, uh, you know, to try to take one system as a whole and replace it, I think there might be some, you know, to March point, an economy of scale to do it all at once. You know, it's hard for, for us to gauge what that would really be. Um, I think, you know, I guess if I was sitting on the other side of the table, I would recommend that we would, you know, kind of put it out there and we could break down, have the contractors break it down per kind of building, and then you can decide at that time, you know, whether it makes sense to, to March point, reject all of them and, and, you know, wait, or, you know, maybe just take a portion of it or maybe do it all, you know, if it feels like it was a very competitive number.
I have another question. Could you speak on, um, what it means, under the subtotal, you have non-constructive costs and bid contingencies? What does that refer to, please?
So, non-construction costs would be, you know, RFE would be part of that number, so again, just trying to give you the whole number. Some of the owner contingency would be that, so like, you know, um, you know, during the course of the work, there, you know, something unforeseen happened during, you know, because again, it's renovation, so there's a chance that could happen, so you're, you're holding some numbers associated with that. That's really the non-construction, um, costs associated, is that, that chunk?
The UTEs and advertisements.
Yeah.
All the.
Plan or UTEs, right, reversals. The, uh, the.
I have a question to you. So like, that, that number, then, that's represented if we would do it all at one time, correct?
It's just, it's, it's a straight percent number of, you know, what we're doing from, from above. And again, that's really not something that, that's just you holding a number aside associated with the project, it's not something that the contractor really sees.
Yeah, and it's not used, if you can hit it back. It's basically a wall system, we're just putting it as a line item and it's not used, you, you don't have to.
Well, is, is there, then, what would like the incremental cost be, percentage-wise, like, you know, if, if we would do this in piecemeal, does it go up by like five percent, ten percent, and is it at, at ballpark?
Yeah, I mean, generally as a rule, we would say probably ten percent, but on this one, I, I don't know, it may be, you know, because it's really one subcontractor, it might be, it's probably less than that, so.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
Are there, this might be for you, Mr. Robbins, are there areas that are affected by this right now more than others?
We, we know that we have, uh, sensors throughout the district that are not functioning correctly.
And unfortunately, I wish I could tell you, that was one area, I know that, for instance, the area on the second floor by the pantry, that sensor has given us a lot of problems and we, there's no indication that it's anything in that area. We had the fire alarm moving in the ceiling, there's nothing that would ever, we've got a, there's a couple of layers in the building up in the, upstairs in the boiler room that we have a, a sensor that kinda gives us an annoying, uh, trouble call to it, so. And, you know, even from the standpoint of, of just talking about replacing the sensors, um, Stanley who monitors our system, monitors our system, is not local anymore, they don't have a local place, so we, even from the ability to have somebody come out, they can tell us where we're having problems, they really can tell us what the problems are. You could get one or two different, uh, alarm companies out, they, you know, they, they wanna start tearing everything apart to try and figure it out and schools and section are not letting tear up the hallway by the music, right, and have to figure out what's going on with that sensor, so.
And I have a question that kind of relates to this, and this might be really not a good question, but let's say we do the whole shebang. Is that going, like, are there things structurally that are gonna need to be redone further on in the process, like walls or floors or like?
I, I wouldn't anticipate that, I mean, this does tie into some equipment like the elevators and stuff like that where it sometimes starts to, that's where the contingency comes into play, that it could sometimes expand, but this one is usually pretty limited, um, that it's, it's, you know, it's gonna be replacement of the devices and the panels.
Like, I'm thinking the pool, so if we redo the walls in the pool, like, for example, we, we go with this and then two years later, we're replacing the walls, is that going to have to, are we gonna have to redo this or will it be?
Yeah, if you reconfigure rooms and why not, you would adjust devices, you know, but you're, I don't know, you know, there's some, the devices and the panels themselves would be utilized as part of your, your, unless you're completely tearing something down and, you know, then I guess that might be a little bit different scenario, but, um, yeah.
Absolutely, the pool would be a big concern because what we know, what has to be done, well, what would be recommended to be done in the pool, we might worry is to, is to essentially take the roof off, get the mechanicals out, have a new roof installed, and then the mechanicals goes to the outside, and the inside walls would be taken down and have vaporware put up, so I, obviously.
So obviously, out of all the, everything that we were looking at, at an initial draft, that's the most structural work to be done in the district. We, nowhere in the district were we going to take walls out of classrooms and make bigger classrooms, we didn't have, that wasn't a hard bit, I think we were working with the basic structure of the building as it is. If anything, probably look at some areas over the elementary building, in some of the old areas, would, to determine what might be there, but when we initially took that plan on, structurally, the district was going to stay intact, with the exception of that pool, that was, that was the big, we knew that with what had to be done there, that walls were coming down and vaporware had to go up, and what needed to be done on the ceiling was major, all those mechanicals had to go out, had to go outside at some point.
Do you have a question? Just, just a, well, if we do a regular, we'll just take the water, the water, as we design.
Does this, and, you know, we don't, we have sprinklers, sprinkler system, and I talk with the fire department periodically, that because of the age of the building, that we're not required to put them in now, if we start a renovation of this magnitude, are they going to say, that's not going, now you're going to have to go with sprinkler systems?
Okay.
What's your proposal, sir?
I was just saying, what you're proposing, or would you anticipate this to be a one-off ad hoc custom-built system, or is this something that would be more of us off the shelf, what's really out there? What I'm getting to that idea of follow-on maintenance and the technologies we need to support that platform, is this something that you envision, you're better available for servicing, or kind of there's a situation where now we're a bit hamstrung in type of whatever, and kind of obsolete.
Is this a, you need to work with specific monitors and this, it's a specialty, okay? Do you need HR workers?
Yeah, local companies will be online with this, and I was going to talk about that, because that's a funny big concern. Stanley is no longer, like I said, they're, they're in Minnesota, and the call I got last night was Sacramento, California. So, it's not even being monitored globally, so to get somebody to come out here, they've really reduced their sort of staffing areas, it's, it's like pulling teeth to get someone from Stanley to come out and take a look at the system, to tell us, hey, you really can't work on it because of the age of it, so.
And any, or all these systems that are not part of your community, anybody?
Okay. So, can you get them a little way, as opposed to second level?
So, one thing to note, the fire system, you know, the high school fire system handles the middle school and the pool, so all that is one system, all goes back to Jimmer Bowles' office. The other thing to note is that the security system is currently looking into the same system as the fire system. So, once we pull that one system out, we may need to look at the security system for the, for the high school and middle school and the pool also. The elementary is a separate entity, and there's a separate security system and fire system over there, and then the, the bus drivers are separate too, from everybody else.
Somebody asked, is this going to affect something else, the middle school, high school specifically? Could it have an effect on the security system because they're tied in?
That was kind of going to be my question, because, and heaven forbid, I want us to add more cost to this, but I was thinking, if we were doing this, is there something else that we shouldn't be doing along with it, that we would be sorry that we're not doing it? And I was thinking more like electrical type things, but I didn't even know that the security system was tied closely to this as well.
That's, that's the only really system that I think is tipped at times, gets tied in together like that, so I, I would, otherwise, it's pretty much a standalone system.
So, from your experience, there isn't something else that should be tied in with, like another improvement that we should be doing?
Not that I would recommend, no. Where like mechanical and electrical, we've talked about, you know, those are more closely tied, we're trying to increase cooling, you know, going back to the facilities assessment, but from a fire alarm standpoint, the security, the security is the one.
And I think what this is asking, is this then cause a change reaction, that now because we've redone this, that now we have to go, what has to be next is that maybe some electrical on that, you know, because quite honestly, we're going to have a discussion later in the meeting about, about sitting back down and developing some stages for this plan and how, what's going to go when, and you guys will absolutely be at the table with us as we do that, but we need to get some things cleared up on our end of that as well, so.
I'm just saying, like, if we do go forward with this, and we, and you guys are starting through the construction of all this and everything else, something pops up that maybe should have also been addressed, and like fix something while something else is being fixed, because it's more cost-effective...
Right.
Than later on, having to do it anyway, and it's, it would be more costly, and maybe there's like duplicating costs or something. I'm just, this is not my area of expertise, obviously, it's yours, but, you know, you know, like, if you're a homeowner or something, you start one project and you think you're just going to fix like the plumbing, then all of a sudden, you got to, you figure out, you know, you're trying to fix the garbage disposal, then you're finding out you got to fix the electrical that goes with it, and not just the plumbing, you got to bring an electrician in, and you got to bring in a plumber. You know, I'm just thinking that way, because this is, this is a big project.
Understood.
And just, I, I would hope that we, you know, we don't want to be sorry later, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Once we get into the design, our designers, if they pick up something, will come back and talk to the board about maybe another recommendation.
Okay.
But we haven't done right now enough due diligence to know that there's something out there that, you know, we're not seeing. We've got to really get into the, get into all the details, and then we'll figure out. We'll work with some vendors too, that will come out here, walk around their designers to see the basic tests.
What would you anticipate the lead time to be between, say, the date that the board would approve this, and you'd do all your preparatory work to a bid, to a bid package?
Sort of.
Boy, I understand, but how long would it take then to get to a point where you'd want to put this up for bid roughly?
We're probably...
Sixty days, ninety days?
I was going to say, probably about six to eight weeks, is generally where we're doing it. Now, the, the one thing too, that with this is, you know, let me just go ahead and transition to that. I have here then to our, to kind of touch on our fee proposal that we had submitted. So, the first task that we have there is to, to come and do updated backgrounds for the buildings, CAD backgrounds that these vendors would utilize to, to do some of their systems. So, that, that itself, we're anticipating is going to probably be about a two-week process to, to survey and, and document the, you know, the, the buildings and develop those backgrounds. And then from there, it's, it's four to six weeks for us.
Jason, would we be able to use the CAD backgrounds for then moving forward, once another, once we have those CAD backgrounds done, so when it comes to whether HVAC or wiring, that, we'll, we'll have, it's important that we have that base set of CAD backgrounds, so we, okay?
We're going to do it once.
Okay.
Only need to do it once, it'll be in our system, and we'll have it forever.
I'm sorry, I hate acronyms that I don't know. What's C A D?
Computer Assisted Drafting.
Computer?
Assisted drafting. It's the schematics, it would be literally the schematics of the building.
Thank you.
I had, I had a question too, and I think I know the answer to this, but like, is there, are there anything we could salvage from the, the current, like, wiring infrastructure that would actually reduce the cost? I mean, I don't know if, if the age of that is, is, is too old, that we would just need to be up to code and have to rewire, or basically, is there something that could be salvaged that would actually reduce the cost and too as well?
Yeah, so the, for where, there are going to be some conditions where we're probably going to have to add some devices to bring the system up to code, you know, so, but for the most part, we're going to try to reutilize the existing locations where we can, and those pathways, so the conduits that carry the, the cabling and the wiring...
Okay.
Could be, typically, they can be reused, and, but the wiring itself does need to be replaced as part of the, the system, and that's where a lot of the cost in...
Let's see, one, one of my questions was about wireless, with a lot of wireless things today, but because of the age of the building and the, the thick brick walls that it's, that it's, it's probably not feasible to be able to do a wireless type, because the, I know that our, Charter Steel just redid their fire systems, but they, they're all wireless, but they have a lot of big open space, and they don't, they're not big brick buildings like we are, like downstairs here as a, you know, nineteen thirty-eight section, it's like a bunker down there, it's still, you know.
Mark, Jason had a question. In your experience, the useful life for a fire alarm system, I think you guys alluded to it before, what would you say the useful life is? And I think our system, Dave, you may even notice, our system's from ninety-one.
Yeah, it's about thirty years.
Thirty years, which is about two thousand twenty-one. So, we're right there.
Technology changes so much.
Right, yeah, it's not, and, and just an add-on to this, which this is before Jason and Mark came on board, when I got here as principal, one of the, what we were going to do at the time, as far as the security system, was the villagers are going to start monitoring our systems for us, they had the capability to do that, and then that was right when the central dispatch came in, and, and they don't have the capability of monitoring our system, so our, the, one of the reasons they kind of stalled on replacing the system back then was that that current system would have been able to be, because Caga Heights would have had somebody twenty-four-seven over at the, at their dispatch center, and they would have been able to monitor both our fire and our, our, our security systems. And then, within two years' time, that's when that legislation passed, and everything went to central dispatch, and we went down and visited in Brexville, while they have the ability to have our cameras up in the building, there's nobody, and, I mean, they've got ten dispatchers in there, and nobody's looking at the TV with our cameras on it. Like, you know, when our cameras were over at Caga Heights' village hall, they got one dispatcher, and it was one TV, and I'd get a phone call periodically, hey, you got a kid walking around on the third floor with the lights off, and, but that, that, that went by the wayside with the, with some changes that took place around the county.
The discussion that we've already had about security and fire overlapping in multiple buildings, shouldn't we be looking at doing everything at once? I mean, are we going to have to come back and have, I mean, it would seem that you're pulling wires for one, you should be pulling wires for both. Have you looked at that as a possibility, where the systems are currently combined?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's something that we discussed, I don't know, I guess it's just trying to get a sense of how much we can bite off at one time as well, so.
They talked about that. I know, but I don't want to come back and have to repeat a lot of the same work, I think that's what you were saying.
You look like, we've got a motion detector sensor here, that's separate from the fire detector over there, so it's, in, in a lot of cases, they're not, they're not run together.
What is the overlap, then? I don't understand.
They run through the panel that it runs through in the monitoring system.
So, so we could maintain the security portion of it, you know, I guess extend that duration a little bit further, because this is going to be, you know, in terms of the, the points that are coming back from the security standpoint, but the fire alarm we're going to pull off and put onto the new panel.
Okay, you're just moving it from one panel to another, essentially.
But, to your point, I mean, if you, you know, if there's an opportunity to, you know, they, they would be the same sort of contractor and vendor that you would, that would work on these systems, but...
Depends on its condition and whether or not it's, be just end of life as well.
We just talked, even talked about the location of the panel, I, man, I would talk, I would want to make sure that the fire and the security panels are side by side wherever they go. Right now, they're down at Jimmer Bowles' office, which is probably the worst place in the building to have them, because two people in the district have a key to that room, so we need to move them up to a place where we can have some central access to them.
Yeah, we would talk to the fire department to see where they would suggest putting the panel on, because sometimes they want to know exactly where it's at. So, those are discussions we need to have, but I guess we can engage the police department on the security system too, and see what their suggestions are.
If there are overlaps...
Yeah.
And then it would make some sense, especially if you have to disconnect and reconnect, and that's extra cost undoing the fire.
Yeah.
Might be better in the long run to add enough money to do some work on security where it makes sense, where they overlap.
And design, we can engage both fire and police, and we'll see what...
Just can't have them in the room at the same time.
I was going to say, they're all probably related anyway.
And I'd say that if they were both sitting here.
Yeah.
I know. I have your best interest in mind.
Absolutely.
You know, by honesty, a lot of districts we work with that have the same problem, they charge you every time they come out, and, and it's not cheap. You're lucky you're going to get charged.
But we are getting a superintendent who's losing sleep.
It's obviously not beauty sleep.
He can be charged another time.
For picking up the phone, exactly.
Mark, Jason had a question. About how many vendors in Ohio can complete work like this for school districts that you guys have seen? Maybe, you know, if you had to guess to me, are there a good number of vendors that can complete this work?
Yeah, they're, they're special to guess.
Yeah.
They're going to want you to work, they're going to want to keep their people busy. My only concern would be, and I don't, Jason, if you've talked to anybody, the availability of the materials. I haven't heard anything about this one.
Well, it's, you know, what we're seeing on the other project, there's, it's not like other materials, it's a little bit more, so typically, in the past, it was probably a, you know, six, six to eight weekly time, now it's probably like more like twelve weekly time that we're looking at with the fire line. But, that's nothing near what we're seeing with like roofing and steel, we're, we're talking, you know, almost a yearly time on some of those. So, it's, it's much more manageable than, than...
What we're seeing too, is when we, when we get bids in, most of the contractors are asking that we turn around and approve them, so they can sign a purchase order within a week, and then it walks in the price, and then we are not going to deal with any price increases, because those are coming out all the time.
We've been, we've been told on things, we're getting prices on right now, that, that quotes are only good for thirty days, as opposed to ninety or whatever before, that people that were reaching out for quotes on, they just don't want to get locked into, with everything being so volatile right now.
Yeah, I'd lock them in quick, when we get a commitment, and they can check up the price on us if they have a price increase.
Any other questions? Gentlemen, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Same you too.
Everybody here have a good holiday.
Thank you.
You too.
Thanks, guys.
Absolutely.
Welcome to the board.
Please, I'll give you a call tomorrow, right?
Okay. Mr. Jantovic.
All right. Yes. Um, this should be in the board docs, the actual program study, because if you want to follow that, and then this is kind of the changes. All right. I'm going to stand over here just so I have a quick... Remember last year, Mrs. Thrasher and I gave a presentation, and we kind of did a, a pretty intense overhaul cleanup of, of the program of studies, so, you know, we don't have too too many changes, we don't have any many major changes, so, so we did a lot of the work last year with the graduation requirements, putting in the seals, talking about the different aspects of, of what goes into that. But what I wanted to do is, I wanted to highlight, because we did make some change, we did continue to clean up the process of, of what we do. Before I get into this, I just kind of want to kind of share where we're, where we're at, so, so what we're going to start doing here in December is start getting course recommendations for kids, to see what classes teachers are recommending for them to be in next year, and then, and then from there, we're going to send out our scheduling sheets. Scheduling sheets, then kids are going to be able to see what they were recommended for, and then they're going to be able to go in and make the selections for some of the electives that they want to, to go through. Mrs. Thrasher will meet with every single kid, making sure that, A, what they're selecting is matching their graduation plans, also then making sure that they, they know what electives and opportunities are available to them, because sometimes kids, kids aren't aware, or they don't, they don't know what some of the classes are, and, and having those conversations, you might need this or that. And then once we have all that information in, we know we will have the kids, we've digitalized, we've digitalized a lot of it this year, to where then we can just go into our spreadsheets, copy and paste into our system, and bulk register them into the computer, and then from there, we can start again to build our master schedule, and then we schedule kids in, and then hopefully by the time we leave at the end of May, in June, teachers know what kids are going to have in the class, kids are going to know what classes they're going to be in. So, we spent a lot of time, well, Mrs. Thrasher spent a lot of time working on the back end, getting some of these things cleaned up. So, just kind of walk, want to walk through the first, first part, update, you know, just wanted to update, you know, new members of the Board of Education, new high school staff, so that's just kind of some of the things, that's going to, the change as time goes, if, if anybody comes new, you know, I'll update those up until the time this gets officially put into place. Number four, and, and four, on page four, if you want to go to page four, I put in two pieces in there. The one part is, beginning with this freshman class, financial literacy is required by the time they graduate in a standalone half-credit class. Currently, they need to have instruction on financial literacy. We embed it within our social studies curriculum. The state of Ohio only requires, you know, world history, government, US history, to be a half-credit course. a half-credit course. We offer them as full-year courses, kind of spread it out, but it provides us opportunities within the curriculum to provide some of the financial aspects embedded into that. State of Ohio says no more. These freshmen are gonna need to have the opportunity to have a standalone financial literacy class.
What is a financial literacy class? Kind of, you know...
Yeah, there's, you know, talking about money, investments, you know, some of the mathematics pieces that go into it. To be able to teach financial literacy, you have to have a license currently as a social studies teacher, a business teacher, or a family consumer science teacher. The state of Ohio is giving flexibility to teachers that have other licensures to be able to get an alternate pathway to that license, and it's rumored that they're gonna provide reimbursement or grant funding for teachers to be able to get some of that licensure. So, I've had some, you know, introductory conversations with Dr. Roy, who is our social studies department chair, and we talked about places and where, how, where this is going to fit. We're not gonna do this with the freshmen, you know, simply because freshmen really, a lot of them don't have jobs, they really don't have a grasp of that. So, you know, we're looking down the road, like, is this a junior, senior-level course, which is gonna give us some time. We still have financial literacy, we have kids that are gonna be taking it next semester that they had an interest in it, and they're like, we want to take this and see what it's about. So, we have a class that's going on, but knowing that everyone's gonna have to over the course of this year, we're gonna have some deeper conversations, and coming into next year, we're gonna have a plan as to really where we're going to embed that to really hit all of the needs of our kids. And the bottom part of number four there, we just wanted to remind kids and parents that, you know, kids are completing graduation plans, you know, that's being done, kids have access to that. Mrs. Thrasher does a fantastic job of meeting with them, contacting, understanding where they're at. But we want kids to be aware, too, that, you know, they need to be able to see, where am I at, what do I need, what do I need to take, to be able to make some of those decisions going forward. So, that's kind of more just a reminder statement that, you know, keep looking at where you're at, what you need. We catch it, I mean, we have a pretty deep spreadsheet that has all their test scores, all of their requirements, the things that they're needing. We have a scheduling document that says this kid needs X, Y, and Z. So, we don't miss a lot, but we always want to put that in there. That is important, because I know when kids get to college, there's not typically somebody there saying, hey, you need to do X, Y, and Z. So, just a little bit of the process. On page five, I removed the graduation requirements for the classes 2021 and 22, because they'll be graduated from our school, so it'll be officially on the SEALs program, where the kids will be required to obtain the two SEALs. I know I spoke at length at that, at a meeting in the past. At some point, I know, we have a lot of stuff on here, so I won't delve into it now, but if you ever want to refresh around the graduation seals and some of the things that we're doing, I can give a specific presentation in more detail at a later time for that. So, if you go through page six, and as we start getting into community service, and all of those things, we really cleaned that up last year, student course load, student schedule changing, course waivers, AP, CCP, grade point calculation. We went into that depth, and we did not touch or make any changes of that. So, I'm gonna turn to page 17. And basically, 17 is just an update of all of our course selections. This will be, once we finalize this, you know, I'll make sure that every course is on here, so kids can see at a glance where they're at. So, art is our first area that we have here on page 18. We struck graphic design. Graphic design was not a class that students were taking, and we have some technology courses that have some similar overlap with the digital media, and then we have a creative productions class in place. So, we pulled that from an offering, just because it wasn't something that has been exciting for kids. There wasn't many, I don't think there's any kids that have signed up for it over the course of a couple of years, and we have classes that are very similar that have an interest. I did want to note, we do have a brand-new art teacher this year. She's taking on a lot of stuff, you know, she did that really cool art show over there with all these things, art clubs doing everything. I see the art club all over decorating. So, her and Mr. Schaefer shared that they want to make some revamp, revamping to the art program, but they wanted to take a year to evaluate where they're at, what they have, what classes are. So, there might be some changes, and she has some really cool ideas, Mr. Schaefer has some really cool ideas, but I think we have a strong art program, so there's no major changes within that. So, if you go to the English department, some of these are just a little bit of cleanup here. Honors English, I moved it up, some, it was, in the last document, it was like three down, it wasn't right by English 1, so I moved Honors English up. As you can see, I struck it because it was down below Honors English 2. On page 21, for AP, English, Language and Composition, basically, all we did was we took the existing content language that was there, that is so old, we don't know where that's from, and replaced it with the language directly from the College Board. So, this is specifically what the aim of the content is. Because the AP is such a prescribed curriculum, we wanted to make sure that we included it in there. And we did the exact same thing there for the page 22, with the literature and composition. On 22, you can also see creative writing. You know, last year, when we had the Family Consumer Science, we had the teacher that we hired, we were all set, ready to go, and then I was on the golf course in July in Arizona, and I got the call that she was resigning her position, and then we couldn't find another Family Consumer Science, so we hired somebody that had a communications, speech, just a wealth of background plus in English. And Ms. Ogden's come in, and creative writing has done, I mean, it's one of my favorite classes to go into, the conversations, the discussions, the things they're writing about, they have poems up there. You know, I have some students that are like, no way, I'm not taking that class. I'm like, well, if you wanted this class, you gotta take that class, you know, and I see them, just like, yeah, it's a great class, you know, like, so, kids are really having a good time in there, and they're learning a lot, they're writing, some of the work that they're doing is amazing. So, I just wanted to articulate what that class was. It wasn't in our program of studies, but we put it back in there. You can see 22, on page 22, speech. Speech was in there, it's always been run as, when it has been run, as a semester course. We had it in a program study as a year-long course. I just wanted to update it that it is a semester course for students in there. Same thing with journalism. Journalism, you know, some of the classes, like journalism, has a 1 or a 2, meaning kids can take it twice. It's really the same course, they just kind of dig deeper into some of the different things. So, it's a semester course, they might take it first semester, second semester, and take it for the full year, or they might take it one year, and then the next year. So, I just wanted to clear it up that journalism on its own, and journalism, too, is actually just a semester-long course. All right. Our next change is Family Consumer Science on page 24, and this is, you know, Mr. Evans and I had some conversations on this and stuff like, we couldn't find a teacher. But we know to the Cogah Heights community, it is a very important class and group of classes. So, basically, I didn't want to take it out, just because, you know, if there is an instance where we think that, you know, that's something we need to bring back, I don't want to lose it, you know, the words that we have there. So, I just want to let kids know, it's currently not scheduled to run next year, but those are the classes that we have in there, and then, as we go next year, if we decide, hey, that's something we want to bring back, then it'll be something we can. If we don't, we choose, you know what, this is something we want to continue to move away from, then next year's revision, I'll pull it out, but I think once it's gone, it's gone. And I know we tried to find it, and I know how important it is to the kids and the community. So, I left it in there to see, you never know, if we get somebody that decides to get their Family Consumer Science license, we can maybe start offering some of those courses. The next one, on page 25, so I wanted to update you, I know I gave a presentation about the addition of a world language teacher. We posted it, and we've gotten zero applications. Zero. Which has been a shock to me, and, you know, we've called some universities, you know, Kent State University has a tie-in to an American Sign Language program, so we called a professor there, called different, you know, colleges that have access to French and Spanish, and the big ones were, American Sign Language was the number one that kids wanted, number two is French, number three was Italian. And then, there was all on there. So, you know, I'm purposely leaving this one blank, and I'm gonna come back to you guys in January, February, and I talked with Mr. Young and Mr. Evans, and the goal would be, you know, was it too early, and people aren't looking for jobs yet? I think that's part of it. We do want to post it up there, because Mrs. Housen and I have a plan as to kind of what we're gonna put into place, and how this is going to work. But our goal is, you know, my goal, I can't speak for everybody, my goal is to hire the best person that is a teacher that is going to make a positive impact on kids. I'm not just gonna hire a sign language teacher, a French teacher, an Italian teacher, because they have the license. I'd rather not expand the program with somebody that's not gonna push us forward as a district. So, I just want to let you know that's where we're at there. Mrs. Bennett and I have been in conversation as to what does Spanish look like, and we do have some changes if we do get the ability to add that, where, you know, bringing in honors track, bringing in some cultural reading aspects, bringing in the middle school things. So, all of those are contingent upon finding somebody. So, when we repost in January, when we come back, and we start recruiting and seeing if we can get anybody, you know, then we'll make that decision, and I'll bring that back to you. But I just wanted to be transparent as to kind of where we are in the process with that. The 26, Health and Physical Education, some of these are, you know, just, you know, I threw out to some department chairs, and these are some of just the content changes that they made, you know, just some wording things. Personal fitness, you know, they wanted to add in, you know, more specifically, they have some programs that they use, they don't swim anymore, so just kind of updating it to what the class actually is doing. The next change is on page 29, small one right there up front. Geometry B, Geometry B is five periods a day, it's not 10 periods, five periods a week, not 10 periods. We offer some math courses that have math lab attached to them, where students really have math for two periods a day to be able to get that extended exposure to the math. Geometry B in the past has had that, but we were finding that a lot of the students that were involved in that math lab then, if they had the math lab, they couldn't go to CBCC. If they had the math lab, they couldn't take a lot of the other electives that were there, and we were finding success at the geometry level without the lab. So, it's a little bit of a different structure of a class, at a little bit slower place, a little bit more intensive, smaller group with some supports built into it, and kids are having success without having the 10 periods a day. The other 29, Algebra II, what did I do there? I just, I moved it up, and I updated course numbers. Throughout the rest of these, a lot of these are just gonna be updated course numbers. Mrs. Thrasher, first time we pulled a report of all the courses that were in the system, it was thousands of courses, and there was a lot of repeat courses that had different course numbers. So, our goal is, we're wanting kids to be able to look at this and write down course numbers, so that it can easily be put in the spreadsheet, so we can batch assign it into the database and be able to go through this. But we're finding we had some struggles, because if half the kids were putting in this number, and the computer was saying that number, it was there. So, it kind of threw us off for a little bit.
It also creates an EMS issue for us, because the course numbers have to coincide with EMS numbers on our state reporting, and there, we'd had some issues before where some things weren't matching up, so Mrs. Thrasher's worked very diligently to clean up a lot of the course number.
Page 31, you know, basically, college algebra, changed the course number, CCP pre-cal, moved it up in the order of the which you would take the class, changed the number in CCP stats. We just kind of cleaned up some of those things, moved them around, and moved it up. The next one on page 33, this is, this change here is, you know, there's some philosophical components to it. You know, bands, typically, always in the past, kids have, you're in band in the classroom, and if you're in the classroom, you do marching band. And if you're not in the classroom, you don't do marching band. And that's kind of how it's been run in the past, but there's been, you know, this year, we found with Mr. Sokol, he knew so much of new people, he would have like, okay, you could do this, or you weren't doing that, and we had kids that were in marching band that wasn't signed up for band, and then we had kids in band that, you know, and there was no level of consistency as to what is the process? Because our new band teachers, like, I want every kid to have every single opportunity that they possibly can, but they don't know what to follow right now. So, basically, what we were saying is that, keeping with Mr. Sokol's like band, marching band is mandatory for high school band students. So, if you're in band, you have to do marching band. But I wanted to put in there that, if there is a conflict, please consult with the band director. Because I don't want to turn a kid away from doing band if, like, you know, obviously, Friday night football, it's like, I can't, or I'm a cheerleader, or I'm in, I was gonna say the band, but, you know, so there's a lot of different things that are there. So, you know, for me, it's, let's put it in there so there's a communication piece that we can know. And then, also, there are students who, I can't take band because I want to go to CBCC, I want to do this, but I really want to be involved in marching band. And I think that's important, because marching band's kind of an extracurricular activity for kids. So, I put in there, if a student is not in band and would like to participate in marching band, they must schedule a meeting with the instructor to determine eligibility prior to the end of the school year. So, basically, our thought was that, is to say, okay, hey, do you know how to play music? Like, have you had that, have you had the private lessons, do you know and understand? Here's the expectations, like, you're not gonna be in band, we're gonna need you at band camp, you know, we need to know these different things. I wanted to provide every opportunity to a kid, Mrs. Schrader wanted to provide every opportunity to a kid, but make it clear to know, what do we need to do, instead of just have people all over the different place when it comes to that. 35, Environmental Science, we just updated the course number there. Onto page 38, Social Studies, we just had a rogue graduation requirement under world history, you know, we don't have it there, so just kind of keeping consistent with Social Studies Department. We struck that from the list. And then, we added here, 39, I put in financial literacy. I wanted to put a notation, so you can see, it's grades 10, 11, and 12, so none of the freshmen will be able to take it as a freshman. We're gonna really adjust what that's gonna look like, but I want kids to start being aware that, beginning with the class of 2025, it is going to be a graduation requirement for them, which is kind of exciting. It's kind of cool for everybody to have that opportunity to get through that.
Mr. Jan Tovich, are you concerned at all just with CBCC kids? Because that takes up so much time, like 11, 12.
So, I mean, there's different routes, there's different conversations, you know, there's different school districts, you know, like, there's some schools that offer world history as freshmen for a half-credit. Some schools give government for a half-credit, you know, and there could be flexibility to where, you know, for, wherever we decide to put it, but we could say, CBCC students, you're gonna take government for a semester, maybe financial literacy for a semester, and then you're getting both of your requirements. Or we might determine that, hey, you know what, this class is better just to give a semester. You know, I did a, I did do a, just, you know, an analysis, I did a correlation between area school districts that offer government as a semester versus as a full year, and seeing what their state test scores are. I found that there was actually a negative, it was a .0007 correlation as you go up, so meaning the longer you taught it, the less you did. But, I took out the two outliers, Brexville, it's a semester-long class, they have like a 97% passage on their end of course exam, which is knocking on the park, and then Brooklyn is a full-year class, and they had a 71% passage. When I take them out, it was a .00009, meaning there's really no correlation to whether you give it as a year or as a semester. So, not saying that that's what we're going to do, because I need to have some solid conversations with the team leaders to see where we're gonna be at, but knowing that we have, I believe, the flexibility to be able to make sure that every single kid gets the things that they need and be able to participate in it.
Awesome.
42, Digital Media, we wanted to put prerequisite none. Sometimes freshmen don't take some classes, because they think they have to be, you know, have some sort of prerequisite, so we wanted kids to know digital interactive media is something that they could take. And that's one of those neat classes that kind of, you know, there's always a lot of kids in there, they're doing some neat stuff. Right now, they're building calendars and things of that nature, so that's kind of the reason why we're pulling away from that graphic design piece, because graphic design is very specific around programs, and things that a lot of times, kids with TikTok and Instagram and Canva, they can come up with some pretty good designs, you know, on their own. With that, then, you know, Construction Technology, we added the prerequisite of woodworking one, so they have the ability to know what needs to go in there. Creative Productions, that was another one that Ms. Ogden is making, is currently going on right now. She did the creative writing, she's doing creative productions, and this is kind of like kids being able to advocate for a cause, or advocate for a story, and be able to do it through a media mode, whether they're doing a podcast, whether they're doing filmmaking and all these things. It's pretty cool. And to sidetrack for that, and I know we don't have the middle school program of studies tonight, because it's kind of dependent on what world language does, but Mrs. Ogden also teaches, we have an Intro to Communications class in 6th grade, where they're doing public speaking, they're doing presentations, they're doing some pretty cool stuff with that. In the 8th grade, it's like a Creative Solutions class, and, you know, the first marking period, I was on a podcast, the kids were doing their own podcasts, and I actually sat on a podcast, a Cleveland Browns podcast. And it wasn't like just a goofy podcast, like, the kids had a research questions, they had specific topics, they wanted me to, we're talking about is Baker Mayfield overrated, is the defense giving up too many points? And they had to think, they had to be, and it's really cool to see the kids do these[1799.22] And they had to think, they had to be, and it's, it's really cool to see the kids do these things. So, but this is like the high school level and it's really beefed up. And, you know, I'm, I'm very excited to see this one. And a lot of kids now, after hearing and seeing what she's doing with creative writing, want to get into this class. So it'll be fun. Woodworking one, we just put no prerequisite there. Woodworking two, prerequisite is woodworking one. Woodworking is like that same thing with speech, kids can take it, it's basically the same class. You can, you're just doing a different project. You're really not learning any deeper techniques until you get to the advanced woodworking that's, that's on there. All right, 44, college credit plus. The only changes we made there is I updated the three numbers. And I also found this and I am embarrassed I didn't clean it up last time, but college algebra has 1.33 high school credits. We can't issue more than one, one credit per class. Back there, I, I think what the idea was at the time was it was four periods for a week and they did divide it by the amount of time and there's a 1.33 factor. But well, we can't issue more credit than, than they, they get for, for taking that, that class. The remainder of the document was either new or, or highly updated in the past. So, you know, I, if you guys have any questions, if you guys have any, any, anything that you'd like, like I said, anything that's, that you want expanded upon or, or shared or any of that, you know, even, you know, I, I think it would be cool at some point in the future, you know, to get some teachers here to, to really showcase the things that they're doing in some of these classes because it's, it's fun. It's, they're, they're doing a great job of it, so.
Yeah, it would be nice to bring, we were doing that for a while, bringing teachers in with special projects, students doing special things, giving a presentation to the board. We were doing that a few years back and got away from it. It'd be nice to get back into that.
With respect to the world language conundrum, has the district explored partnership opportunities with other surrounding districts that might have?
Not available.
None available, even in the other surrounding districts?
Yeah, right. Ben and I had talked for a long time about sharing a sign language teacher. It got so popular, they, they kept the person down. There's, there's, where, where it's taken off, people are holding on to people tightly.
I just wanted to know if you could, it wouldn't be optimal.
And, and we're, we're starting to feel it from, you know, when you get, you know, your typical elementary school teacher, your social studies teachers, your middle school teachers, you still have a very, very deep pool. You know, when we had our social studies opening last year when we hired Mr. Kay from, from Brexville, it was, it was deep and it was a good pool. But some of your specialty areas, you know, back when, you know, AI was going through school and even after that, I was like, ah, it's really hard to find a job. There might only be one Spanish teacher, really limits your opportunities. So we're starting to feel that now and seeing that like with the family consumer science, they're not even offering programs at colleges anymore for kids to be able to have access to this, you know, and, and, you know, it's, it's, it's there, I think, you know. I think, AI, I think it's early. I think we posted it early and people aren't looking right now. You know, if you're a brand new teacher, you might not realize that your school district is one that you want to get out of and try to obtain to a different one. You know, it, it's just kind of, if you're a veteran teacher, you're such in the groove, you haven't even thought like, hey, I can leave not as good of a situation to maybe come to Cuyahoga Heights. So I'm thinking that after the new year, you know, utilizing some of those aspects, you know.
I mean, there's December graduations now too.
Yeah.
So that might.
We discussed, we've already reached out to some of the colleges to let them know that we've, we've got some potential openings that we really, if you have students, we, Mike and myself have both made calls. I know Holly has too, out to surrounding colleges, just that they're colleges of education. Try to get drilled down into the people that are in contact with the students as opposed to talking to whoever posted, they're posting over on the wall and say, hey, can we talk to the professor? Can we talk to somebody who knows the kids that are in the pipeline, that, that kind of thing? So like, we're trying to, yeah, use every connection that we have.
Mrs. Thrasher shared probably beginning to mid-February is the time where she's really sitting down and having conversations with kids about what scheduling is going to look like for next year. So we're going to have to, to really see where we're at because once we hit that, like if, if we have a candidate pool and we're looking at this, then I'm going to start screening them. And, and my screener is always more about who you are as a human being, like who you are as a human being, you know, do you have the characteristics that's going to make you fit in Cuyahoga Heights? And then any subsequent interview after that is going to be, do you know your content? Do you know all, all of that stuff? So if, if we're looking, we repost and we don't get anything, then, then we'll come back to the conversation that says, listen, we're not going to do that. We'll be reaching out with partnerships in that time to see if there's there. You know, there, there are some, you know, we could get somebody from, if we wanted to add Arabic or Chinese, we could have a teacher switch program. We had an email about that one.
Chinese is too difficult. We were, we ended up at Dinah and they.
We had it in Lakewood, it's pretty successful.
If the kids started, it just, it's such an in-depth language.
Yeah, it's really hard.
They just dropped the fly bottom.
You guys can trade me for a Chinese teacher now. Learn China for a year. But, but you know what, like I said, we'll, we'll, we'll turn over any stone to, to get the best person here first. All right.
Thank you.
Good work, Jantovic, thank you. All right. That's up, Mr. Mugiero, treasurer's business.
Thank you, Mrs. Shuker, a couple items tonight for approval. Item 5A, approval of minutes, motion to approve the minutes of the November 17th, 2021 regular meeting as found in attachment T1. Item 6A, motion to accept the bank reconciliation, financial reports and payments for board review as of October 31st, 2021 is prepared and certified by the treasurer's accurate as found in attachment T2. Item 6B, motion to approve new vendors to the school district for W9s attached as found in attachment T3. Item 6C, motion to approve purchase orders over 5,000 as found in attachment T4. Item 6D, motion to approve a modification to the permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2022 as found in attachment T5. Item 6E, motion to accept the attached list of donations received through November 30th, 2021 as found in attachment T6. Item 6F, motion to approve the following then and now certificate pursuant to section 5705.41 of the Ohio revise code is hereby certified that both at the time of the making of this contract or order and at the date of the execution of the certificate, the amount required to pay this contract or order has been appropriated for the purpose of this contract or order and is in the treasury or in process of collection to the credit of the fund free from any previous encumbrance. And item 6G, motion to approve the attached agreements with Delta Dental, renewal of dental insurance effective 1/1/2021 to 10/1/2020, excuse me, 1/1/2022 to 10/1/2022 and 10/1/2022 to 10/1/2023, attachment 7B. As for those motions.
Sorry. At this time, we'll take a motion to approve the treasurer's business consent agenda motions.
So vote.
Moved by Mr. Naaman.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Adair, discussion.
I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Financial reports, we covered a lot of that in the previous month with our five-year forecast, so I won't go too in depth there. For new vendors to the school district, if we click on the lead sheet, T3, we have four tonight. First one is Douglas A. Clay, doing business as Kandor. That's the analytics on learning data post-graduates. Graphic Source, that's printing service for our district communications. World Wildlife Fund, that's the donation that the art club chose when they held their fundraiser, that they wanted to donate proceeds from that fundraiser to that vendor, which is World Wildlife Fund. And the fourth one is Jug Sports for baseball and softball equipment. For purchase orders over 5,000, if we click on T4, the lead sheet, we have five. The first one's Colonial Oil Industries, that's a blanket PO for fuel and oil for our buses that we have, $30,000. Number two, Auditor of State, this is for our audit services that we have, a blanket of $17,000. Bureau of Workers' Compensation, this is for our premium installment for coverage year 1/1/2022 to the end of it, 1/1/2023, and that's $37,933. It's actually less than the prior year, which was about $45,000 for our rate. We don't have, we do have control, but we don't in a way. If people get hurt, our premium goes up on the job site, they collect workers' compensations. We try to keep the site as, you know, the school district as safe as it possibly can to avoid a higher premium.
So you're saying it went down because we had no claims or we had fewer claims?
Correct. Number four, Project Lead the Way. The next two deal with our CTE partnership proposal, which is the reimbursement grant from the CBCC. That's for Gateway Equipment for $10,000. And number five is Techmark Computer Products for scientific calculators, $5,500 that we have. And we thank the CBCC for that reimbursable grant.
I have a quick question for you too. So like with, with all the meticulous spreadsheets that you do and, and actually it's such good work, is, is there an increased reliance from the auditor of the state on your work? That we could actually reduce the fees because, because, because the stuff that you do is so extensive that they probably just take it and make copies of it and say, okay, they make some check marks and they're good. Because you tie everything out, I mean, that's an auditor's dream. So like, is there, is there a, there, there might be a savings there?
I try to.
Okay.
I always try to. They, sometimes they look at me, you know, why am I talking so much? And they want me to leave, but I always try to. So I, you know, I, I always try to show them how everything traces out and.
I figured you did.
Yeah, sometimes, yeah.
You guys are on the same wavelength, aren't you?
We had an auditor, I mean, our, our current audits taking place and we had an auditor here today and I was showing her how a couple of our pilot agreements, payment loop taxes kind of trace each other all the way through. And, you know, it was kind of funny. So she just kind of looked at me and I think she was looking straight through me when I was explaining.
So they won't budge, huh?
I tried.
So they won't budge at all, huh?
I keep trying, so it's one of those things.
Just tell me you won't give your work, your work papers to them. So, but we'll see what happens.
Excellent. Let's see, we, the modification to the permanent appropriations, that's a decrease for our general fund. So we board approved the November 2021 five-year forecast and our expense amount, our total expenses from that document to our initial budget is lower. So therefore we're lowering our appropriations by $147,000 from the beginning of the year to match with what we board approved for the November 2021 five-year forecast. So that's why we're dropping our appropriations in the general fund. Donations received, we want to thank, the donation, if I click on item T6, Tim Kleimer, Barkland Heights Dog Daycare, that's a tongue twister, for the $200 donation that they donated to the art club. And at first I thought Barkland Heights was misspelled. Like, no, that's not the case, and I saw the website, so. But we thank them very much for that donation. The then and now certificates, we have two. Typically we don't like, you know, I don't, not in favor of using this tool that's in place that they have. But if we have to use it, you know, we use it very sparingly, which we do. And we have one for Bureau of Workers' Compensation and the other one's the Auditor of State's office that we have for those invoices, that's why we have the then and now. The renewal of the dental insurance, item 6G. And this is to renew our new service, which is crazy because it felt like it was just the other day that we board approved that MOU to change, but that was a year ago. So about a year ago, we switched from Medical Mutual over to Delta Dental. And we worked in conjunction with both unions on that change and we had better services at a lower cost. And we locked in the two years upcoming at a lower cost than what we were paying back in 2018, which is pretty remarkable if you think about it. So I think that this is a good return on investment that we're looking at for Delta Dental. And the staff is extremely happy with the benefits that they're getting from Delta Dental. I'm going to ask for those motions for approval tonight.
Roll call please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Since we were talking a lot about PI expenditures earlier in this meeting.
Yes.
We have $477,000 into that fund this year from profits from the village tax.
Yep. Yep, yep.
Funds that have come back into us.
Yes.
Brain isn't working at the moment. What do we anticipate next in succeeding years? Are those going to go on for a while?
Great question. Let's go. Let's go to item 6A.
I couldn't get the words out.
Item 6A, so if we all go to item 6A, let's click on the spreadsheet I have for permanent improvement fund revenue, which is item T2Q. We click on that attachment. I have it mapped out.
Right, I see that, you do have it divided.
It's so tiny.
It's, it's tiny, but you can hit the plus button to make it bigger at the very top.
You can't see the totals, but you can see September, July and August.
Yeah, so with the plus button, if we look at the, look at the bottom half more than the top half at this point. So the red number that's highlighted, 288,376. That was the payment that we received back in August, so that's on row number one in the second cell. So 288,376. That's the last payment under that agreement that we received. So that was for calendar year 2020, we received that payment, 8/17/2021. That's the last one for that line item. So no more payments are we going to receive for that agreement. We can see the past history, I included about five years worth in there. If we go down in the second bar that we have towards the bottom of the screen, we can see $100,000, $100,513 in red. That payment was received back in July on row number two, under that agreement number that we have. And that's the last payment for that agreement, the $100,513. And we received that payment, 7/12/2021. Now the next bar, it's split into two, this is a new agreement that just started. So the first two bars, those agreements have expired. We've received the last payment in this fiscal year for those agreements. There are no more carry-on after that. So the amount that we've received so far in permanent improvement funds is going to decrease significantly going into the future. The third bar that we have, agreement 310-17-01, is split into two different payment compensation methods, a property tax and a payroll income revenue. And we have the amounts highlighted in red as well. So year two, $65,000, we just received that payment back on row three, the $65,000 in July. So 7/12/2021. And we received three specific payments of $65,000, then it converts to year four through year 15. So that's calendar year 2022 through calendar year 2033. And I have the explanation about what those payments will be from that point in time. And then the bottom half of that bar that we have, the payroll revenue that we received, we received a highlighted amount, $23,358. And we received that back in August, August 17th, 2021. And that's year one under those terms of that agreement. So we're going to receive the bottom bar going forward, $65,023. It's going to differ a little, that's kind of where we're at. So we're looking at about under $100,000.
Supposed to almost five.
Yes. Now we are, there, there is some, something, you know, being discussed about extending a new agreement with Charter Steel. And we've had very preliminary discussions with the village on that. So we hope that we'll have something to come forward with to the board that we have a future agreement with Charter Steel that, you know, extends payments that we can place into our permanent improvement fund. So that's in the works. It took a, a bit of time for me to comprise this because I would work with a bunch of, you know, the villages and everything like that.
But are you saying that the monies that we received from Cuyahoga Heights, Valley View and Brooklyn Heights aren't coming anymore?
The village of Cuyahoga Heights.
Yeah, the villages.
Yes.
Just Cuyahoga Heights now.
Yes, just Cuyahoga Heights.
Oh, just Cuyahoga Heights.
Yeah, the Valley View one expired a while back.
And we, and we're not getting it.
Brooklyn Heights, that's a few and they've expired over years.
Right.
NIDAC is the only one.
Right.
NIDAC could be the only one.
Right, and that one's coming up new. So that, that one we had before in the five-year forecast, but we, we discussed it as an administrative team. We're taking that one out of the five-year forecast where we had it and we're going to place it into this permanent improvement fund. So I'm going to update this sheet to reflect the NIDAC payments that are going to begin in 2022. And I just talked to the fiscal officer, Frank, over at Brooklyn Heights. That $45,000, I think it was, is going to start, you know, sooner. So, yeah, we're looking at, you know, a little bit more. And what we want to do with NIDAC is we want to put it on line six. So we've been looking a lot of revenue to that permanent improvement fund, which is 003-0000, which is comprised of lines one through five. So that's a sub-account, that permanent improvement fund that we have. Our permanent improvement technology fund, which is row six, is special cost center 9197 and fund 003. And there's no revenue that builds up that account. So what I wanted to do was build up that particular account with a source of revenue. And I thought, none better than NIDAC. So we talked about it as an administrative team and we said, well, we're going to be purchasing a lot more of the Chromebooks in the future and we don't want to just drain that fund from where it's at. So the NIDAC works perfect to plug in. And we have a set aside requirement from ODE that we have to put so much money into permanent improvements per year, which has been satisfied by all of these pilot agreements that we've had. So, so we've, you know, we, we're trying to take care of our technology, you know, implementations for the next 15 years that we don't have to worry about it with NIDAC.
If we didn't, if we didn't have the pilot agreements, we would have to move general fund money into PI based on ODE's requirements. Certain amount of money has to go into PI every year for every district in the state of Ohio.
We're going to spend the money.
We choose to do it with the, with the, with the agreements and that, that covers some of that. So we're not. some of that. So we're not transferring money out of our general fund into the permanent improvement fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Cool.
Roll call.
Roll call, yep.
Oh, did you have more?
No, no.
I didn't.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mr. Souchacki.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Treasurers, discussion.
Just had a couple items for discussion. 8A, uh, the financial statements. So we just finished our financial statements for fiscal year 2021. We have to, uh, take our cash basis accounting system for the whole year and convert it to GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. So we take our cash basis to a modified accrual basis, which is GAAP. And then we have to comprise and create those financial statements and we contract with the Auditor of State's Office to make those financial statements. So they've been created, um, they're due 150 days after the close of our fiscal year. So our fiscal year closes 6:30 every year. 150 days outside of that is always around Thanksgiving. So I always know to, you know, really get it in gear by Halloween and it has to be done before Thanksgiving. So, um, we file every year on time and that's one of the requirements that, uh, we have to do. So, um, we just have to provide notice every year. So the Cogahoga Heights Schools' financial statements for fiscal year 2021 are completed and are available for view on our website under the Treasurers tab. It is also available in hard copy format in the Treasurer's office. Per ORC Section 117.38, the Treasurer must publish notice in a newspaper circulated in our political subdivision or taxing district that the financial report has been completed and is available for public inspection during normal business hours. As the Cleveland Plain Dealer is the official publication of record for our district, we will post notice there. And I just have to say, this is one of the most challenging years to create these financial statements with everything going on COVID. So in a normal year, it's pretty hectic to get it done, but the COVID year, this is one of the most challenging I've had in my entire career creating, uh, these financial statements. So it's, uh, but that's for everybody. Everybody's in the same boat with, uh, with COVID that we have, so. Item 8B, our alternative tax budget fiscal year 2023, um, that must be passed by the Board of Education Honored before January 14, 2022. And we have a tenanted Board of Education approval January 5, 2022 at the Board meeting. And then it must also be filed with the County Budget Commission Honored before January 20, 2022. Um, I attached the alternative tax budget that we approved January 6, 2021, just for reflection, but our tax budget mimics our five-year forecast. So everything that we do in the five-year forecast just goes over to the, um, tax budget that we have. I already have the, um, evaluations, they were released. I'm still waiting for the, um, effective rates updated from Cogahoga County, but our valuation did go up, which is very good for us. So we'll talk more about that in January that we have upcoming. Um, and then the last item we have for tonight, item 8C, uh, we have good, great news. Um, we received notification, uh, via press release from the Auditor of State's Office that our clean audit for fiscal year 2019 qualified us for an Auditor of State Award. So this is a great team accomplishment that we have for the community, staff, administration and Board of Education. And I just want to give a special shout out to two rock stars, Yelitza Rodriguez and Kathy Martin. They're awesome. They're outstanding.
We want to give a shout out to you.
I literally wrote rock star on my paper before you said it, all three of you.
I'm going to, one thing I'm going to try to do is, uh, we had a picture taken the last go around, um, with them. I'm not sure if COVID is going to change any of that, but, um, if, I'm definitely going to, having to open an invite for the Auditor of State. So Keith Faber, I'm going to let them know, if he wants to open an invite, he can come to one of our board meetings and present. So we'll see if that happens.
It's outstanding work. It's outstanding. So you got a streak going now.
Well, next...
If you look at that list, I think there's only two or three schools on that list.
Two.
Yeah, a lot of them.
Oh, yeah. I'm impressed.
Right, yep.
All right, Mr. Dobbins, you're up.
9A, motion to adopt revised miscellaneous pay rates, 2021-22 schedule, as found in the attachment. 10A, motion to approve employment of Jim Dankle as a regular van driver. Hours is assigned step one for the 21-22 school year contingent upon successful completion of FBI BCI background record checks certification if applicable. B, motion to approve reemployment of Jason Deal and Kelly Hartman as fitness center monitors on an as needed basis for 2021-22 school year per the adopted wage schedule, step two, contingent upon successful completion of FBI BCI background record checks and certification if applicable. C, motion to approve the employment of Dawn Zork as Secretary for the 2021-22 school year on a one-year limited contract for the adopted wage schedule, step 1344415, contingent upon successful completion of FBI BCI record checks and proper certification if applicable. 11A, motion to approve employment of Logan Dietrich as a technology aide not to exceed 24 hours per week during winter break, December 13th to January 7th, on an as needed basis for the miscellaneous pay rate schedule. B, motion to approve the employment of Sarah Hart as the middle school girls' assistant basketball coach for the 21-22 school year for the adopted pay rates. C, motion to approve the employment of Danny Connors and Karikovic as substitute teacher callers for 2021-22 school year, each at the 50% of the $1,500 stipend. D, uh, motion to approve the employment of Matt Stryker as the head boys varsity baseball coach for the 21-22 school year per the adopted wage schedule, contingent upon completion of BCI FBI background checks. E, motion to approve employment of Randy Stryker as assistant boys junior varsity baseball coach for 21-22 school year for the adopted salary schedule. F, motion to approve the employment of Amanda Hartman as a ticket taker for 21-22 school year per the adopted wage schedule, contingent upon successful completion of background checks. G, motion to approve Jeanette Mooney to receive a stipend for a total of $150 to train a Chase employee as a result of a change in assignment. 12A, uh, motion to accept the resignation due to retirement of Jeanette Mooney effective 12/31/2021 after 35-plus years of service to Cogahoga Heights Schools. B, motion to accept the resignation due to retirement of Kathy Dietzel effective 1/31/2022 after 34 years plus years of successful employment at Cogahoga Heights School District. 13A, motion to approve, uh, Kim Walter as a substitute student teacher monitor for 21-22 school year for the adopted wage schedule. B, motion to approve attached substitute teacher list for 2021-22 as updated December 21 by the Educational Services Center. And C, motion to approve Jake Lasky as a volunteer boys basketball coach, 21-22 school year per the adopted wage schedule. There is no wage schedule because he's a volunteer. 14A, motion to approve an eighth grade overnight trip to Washington DC, March 14th to 16th, 2022, per the attachment. B, motion to approve a contract with Music Theater International, MTI, per the attachment agreement for the royalty rental recording scripts and streaming license for the school play, AIDA, to take place March 2022, at a cost of $1,875, 25 cents plus $100 in shipping. I ask for tho, I, those items to be approved.
At this time, I'll take a motion to approve the Superintendent's Business Consent Agenda motions.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Souchacki.
Okay.
Seconded by Mrs. Etter. Discussion.
Okay, the miscellaneous pay rates, I previously said, uh, it presented to you about raising the substitute pay rate by $20 in each category. Two other changes, Mr. Mucho, the tick, the, uh, minimum wage is going up, so the, the ticket taker salary goes up and to, to mirror minimum wage. And the, the substitute caller rate was approved by this board six or eight years ago. We approved the rate and then, but there was no place for that to go. So it's not a chat supplemental contract and Chase doesn't have something else for each, so each year we, it was kind of just floating out there. We've added it to this, the number hasn't changed, we're just adding it to the, so it has a, has a home now, um, on an annual basis. Jim Dankle's moving to a regular van driver position, Jim's a valued employee, fitness center monitor, so we can get the fitness center back open. Jason Deal and Kelly Hartman will be open Monday through Thursdays, uh, in the evenings. Uh, you know, we just, we had recently renovated the fitness center and then COVID struck and nobody got to use it. So there's some people excited about getting back in there. Employment of an elementary secretary, uh, she's sitting behind me and I know she'll crack me in the head if I say anything too bad. That, that's Dawn, uh, Dawn was here, uh, and left, uh, for greeter pastures.
With a lot of other people.
A lot of other people, yeah. Somebody stole her back away, so we had the opportunity to steal Dawn back, uh, and we're, I'm recommending Dawn Zork, uh, for, uh, to fill Kathy Diesel's position. She brings a wealth of knowledge and some systems that are, that she's used in other districts that will be a benefit to us. And the most relieved person in the district is Joy Housen. Um, she cannot sleep at night for fear of not what's going to happen now when Kathy leaves. Um, but, uh, we're, I'm excited to recommend Dawn, uh, coming back here to Cogahoga Heights. Technology aide, Logan Dietrich, has been a, a great assistance to us during the summer. He's got a couple weeks of Christmas break, he's going to help us, uh, help Dave out. Uh, Sarah Hart is going to be assistant middle school, Sarah is our school nurse who's contracted through PSI and she's a wonderful young lady and I think excited about helping with middle school basketball. So we're happy to have Sarah come aboard. She does a fantastic job in her nurse's position.
Beautiful.
Danny and Kara are going to split that substitute caller rate. Uh, we posted that position, it didn't get filled, but it had to be done anyhow, so we gave it to Sarah and Danny. So they said, hey, can we get paid for it? And I'm going to say, well, yeah, you're doing the work, so. Uh, head baseball coach, Matt Stryker, Matt's been on our staff for a long time here, baseball and basketball. Uh, he's, he's agreed to step up and take the baseball varsity job at this point. Assistant coach, his dad, Randy, Randy's also been here for a long, long time, uh, as an assistant coach, uh, two, uh, incredible assets to our program, they, they're just great with our students. Uh, ticket taker, Amanda Hartman for ticket takers as we move forward, uh, through the winter season. Uh, Jeanette Mooney, uh, uh, we needed to have Daris over there during the day and Jeanette needed to do some training with him. And, and we have a mentoring stipend in there, but it was for new employees, but even though Daris, so we had to add this because Daris is not essentially a new employee, but it's a change in position because he has to find out the ways and the secret handshake over in Happy Land so he can function in the elementary building when he takes over over there, so. And regretfully accepting the resignation...
How do you feel about it when you clean up the elementary?
Yeah. Uh, regretfully accepting the resignations of Jeanette and Kathy, almost 70 years of, uh, employment here in the district, two outstanding employees that are, are, are going to be, uh, have been very valuable and be sadly missed. Uh, and Kim Walter stepping up as a, a substitute teacher's aide, uh, student aide, student monitor aide, the substitute teacher list from the ESC. Jake Lasky, volunteer that helped us last year, is going to help us again this year, done a great job. Uh, the eighth grade overnight trip to Washington DC, 14th to the 16th. If you have questions, Mr. Jan Tovich can answer those. And, uh, the contract for the musical, I talked to Mr. Michaels, this is a Disney production, so, uh, I told him, I said, I'm not, you know, always my fear of what, what theatrical production we're going to do. He, this is, this is Disney created. He, he assured me that it would, there wouldn't be any controversy attached to it, which means that there will be at some point.
I'm Disney. All right.
Ask for the approval of those items.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Souchacki.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Your comments, Mr. Dobbins.
Um, a couple of things, I'm going to swing back around to the PI stuff again. Congratulations to, to Matt and his office on, on being recognized, that they do tremendous work up there. And, and just for those of us that went through the dark times in the Treasurer's office here, uh, and, and I, I say that somewhat facetiously, but not really facetiously because of, there was a lot of indecision and lack of what was going on up there. And it's just so nice to know that, uh, i's are dotted and, and t's are crossed and, and they, and they, they take such pride in their work up there, a great job on there, uh, by them, everybody in the Treasurer's office. Middle school concert was yesterday, uh, well done. Uh, high school tomorrow night, looking forward to that. Congratulations to Mike Tartara. Uh, Mike is now the all-time winningest basketball coach in Cogahoga Heights, uh, school history. Passed Bob Coy, legendary coach Bob Coy, uh, the other night with his win over Crestwood. Mike was quick to say he's, he's probably fast approaching the all-time losingest coach for Cogahoga Heights too, but, uh, Mike doesn't like to take a lot of, uh, accolades for that, but he does a tremendous job, um, with the basketball team and with, with the young people that, that play for him. And I, that's, uh, he's fun to watch, uh, just part of that tremendously solid coaching staff that we've, we have here at Cogahoga Heights in, in almost every area. You saw some emails from me on, on House Bill 126. Um, I CC'd the board members on that, Senator Dolan, I also, uh, Representative Crossman and Robinson today. Representative Crossman got back to me immediately, assured me that he was a no vote and assured me that he was working diligently to try to get as many people. This is, this, this simply, uh, this is the legislation that, this is the gift that keeps on giving. We talked, we've talked about this for four years because it came up and then it got, it didn't get through committee. It came up, it didn't get through committee. It came up again, it didn't get through committee. Well, now, uh, it's, it's up for a fourth time and now it's gotten through committee. Uh, pretty disappointing, Senator Dolan, for his support of this, uh, on the Ways and Mean Committee. This really hamstrings us as far as border, appealing, uh, decisions by the border revisions. Uh, you saw in my email, I said, listen, we are dependent upon, uh, those, those tax values and, and our ability to challenge. Uh, they, they're making it much, much more difficult for us to challenge property values moving down the road. So, uh, very frustrating piece of legislation that looks like it's on the doorstep of being approved. So, um, you know, I, I called and sent emails and, uh, you know, Matt had sent a letter previously, uh, on some of this stuff, but, uh, a little, quite a bit of frustration there, but, uh, we'll see how that comes out the other end. Athletic Hall of Fame is next Friday, December 17th. The luncheon's in the afternoon. Ceremony will be at the Lobella game. This is the first time we're doing it in winter. We were not able to do it last year due to COVID, so we didn't do it during football season. So that group of inductees has been waiting patiently for a year and a half to be inducted. We didn't do it during the fall this year because we were just getting back to school and we didn't want to rush it and not do it. So we thought by switching up and doing it at the Lobella, uh, tournament, we're going to do that.
December 17th.
December 17th, that, that Friday. I'll make sure that, uh, the board gets mailed an email of invitations, uh, we're not in session that day, so, um, but the luncheon's at Harry Steakhouse and then they'll do the induction here that night at, at the, at the game. So, uh, good group going in this year. Sort of back to, to the discussion on PI and, and, uh, obviously, one of the things I said to a couple of board members I talked with, this is, this is very, this is very overwhelming, I mean, just for lack of a better term. Because as, you know, if you went to any of those presentations at OSBA, and I've been to them at Bassett, generally speaking, when they talk about renovations, they're saying, well, we redid our HVAC and we put some fresh paint on stuff. So they were talking about very targeted, uh, permanent improvements. We're, we're talking about top to bottom renovation of the district, updates and renovations, so that, which is much more than any of those groups have done. Uh, and the discussion comes out is, is what group oversees that? And, and there's, and what I would recommend and I, I hope that we can work toward a group that would meet probably four times a year that, that is, and I want to advertise quite honestly for, for some community, but it needs community members, it would need board members and it would need administrative, uh, members, uh, that would meet probably four times a year. And Matt and I are going to start by trying to do a timeline and a priority list and GPD[1661.03] to be involved in it. But I would think that this would be an offshoot of the finance committee because the PI is going to be, those numbers are going to be tied to the finance committee. But I want a group, and I know Mr. Potal has stepped onto the best committee because he has some interest in this, but I think we have other community members that have maybe engineering or building backgrounds that can help us with this. And I'd really like to bring maybe four core community members. He took a look at the draft and had some really insightful looks at that, to be able to sit down with people that have that kind of background, to be able to look at this. And, you know, many of the questions you asked today are the same questions that they're asking about so many things. And to help us kind of develop that priority and what that looks like. And all those questions that you asked tonight are the questions that hang over the whole project about doing things in chunks. How much more does it cost us to do it that way? Would other issues arise as you start to pull wire on a fire alarm? Does that now, are we, electric wire? What ties together? What can be done independently? What can be tied together? Way beyond Tom Evans' scope of being able to sit down and do a plan. But we need GPD, we need people that have a background in that area, and we need board members and Matt that will know the finances of what we're looking at moving forward that can also help to develop what the finances are going to be. Because, you know, we've been throwing numbers around without any basis of information other than this draft that we got originally as far as what we might need permanent improvement wise. And that may change, that may take a different look to it. We talked about a continuing PI levy moving forward. It may be different. Maybe we want to look at a tenure that's a little more heavily loaded so we can do these things and then there's more of an economy of scale to get things done at a quicker pace. I don't know what that looks like, but that needs to be, come to light via committee. So that's what I'm going to recommend we do. I'd like, I'm going to start advertising in Tom Talks for community members that want to take part in that. I'm going to probably talk about anywhere, not more than six meetings, not less than four meetings a year where we would sit down for a couple hours and go through those, some of those things and what that looks like to really get us closer to a plan. Because we can't even begin to talk about what a levy looks like until we know what those numbers are and until we know what kind of timeframes that we're going to work under. And that's when, that's when, that's when we would formulate a plan for a levy and what that would generate and how we could go about doing that. So that's me doing a whole lot of talking without any interjection from any of you folks. But that's, that's kind of where I'm at now with the levy planning for the PI. We know that there's also a general fund portion that comes with that. Matt's on solid ground with that. I think that's, that can end up being an add-on if we want to do a combination at some point, which is what we've talked about. I think that part is pretty cut and dry right now. The PI part of this is the big question mark, kind of hanging over our heads right now.
So here's my question. If best is looking at levy, you got this new group looking at PI, what is the finance committee even doing? I would recommend, just initially, can this go through the finance committee? You know, we're talking.
It could.
Just because I don't know what else the finance committee could do other than look at the five-year forecast like a thousand times.
But my, my only concern to that is like, it's a.
It's a spinoff.
Mr. Naaman is an auditor. He's a finance person, okay? I hear Mr. Naaman ask building questions that are like engineering type questions. So it's, it's a different set of, while it all works in the numbers.
I'd like to.
I think you need, I think you need both sides of that.
Right. But I'd like to get more people active in the finance committee. I don't know. I don't, I just don't know what, like, when we talk about, because that's coming up in the future of this meeting, like, the committees, like, what would the purpose of the finance committee be? It's just what I'm saying.
Okay.
Like, I don't know.
Well, if you want to expand the scope of the finance committee, say, listen, the finance committee is going to be taking this, this task on.
Yes.
And make sure that as we start to recruit people for the finance committee, that, know that this is a big part of your role, is not only going to be looking at the five-year forecasts and our funds expenditures and our revenue, but also the nuts and bolts dollars and cents of a permanent improvement to the district.
I don't know, unless, unless there's other things the finance committee can do.
I think, I think you have to look, you have to give it the perception of basically the finance committee just being finance people. And so basically, you need, you need to bring, you're to bring, like.
It wasn't though. Like, when I was doing it, it wasn't. I was begging anybody that had a sense of it because it was hard to get people to volunteer for it.
Yeah, right, exactly. But I think you need the mix of financial and operational people that could actually provide like, hey, the assessment of the building, what's it going to cost and ask the questions on a financial perspective and also an infrastructure perspective, like what we can do and everything.
And I, just an interjection of that, I said, when things are like going really well, I think people tend not to want to be a part of it. And I think people not wanting to be a part of the finance committee isn't necessarily this. I think people looking at the job that Matt, that's going on up there and say, well, why would I, everything's, they're hitting on eight cylinders. What do I need to be a part of that for? I think as soon as you say the word levy, I think some people ears are going to perk up in the community, you know, for good, bad, or otherwise. But as soon as you start talking about levy, I think people that were not interested before will quickly be interested. And I think that can be good because I think you want questions asked on both ends of this.
Yeah, absolutely.
As you go through it.
I just would, and maybe this is an off topic, but like us to better define maybe some of these committees, like, you know, best and finance and, you know, whether it's like a superintendent committee or a board committee, like, I don't know. I think there just needs to be some more, some clear definitions. But we could form another committee too.
Yeah, it kind of goes, and to some extent along with the best committee because they're more, they're less into the dollars and cents of how we get there, but more into the what goals do we have? And that's not.
Right. And I think if we start talking money with the best committee, we'll end up with.
No, we don't want to talk money with the best committee, but goals and what we need to achieve those goals, what sorts of infrastructure do we need to support the goals of the best committee? I think that kind of fits in and then there's some overlap as it moves toward finance. But once you get kind of idea of where we want to go as a district, then I think we need the finance committee to jump in and say, okay, how can we possibly get there? And what do we need to get there? And maybe we ought to do some prioritization and, you know, but there's prioritization based on need and prioritization based on finance, the kind of two different parallel overlapping things. That's the way I see it. I just don't know how to bring it together.
And the other thing too, there's only so many people that are going to want to participate.
Yes.
And so if you have more committees, that spreads it.
Starts spreading people.
Too thin.
Yeah.
So I think it's a better idea of what you're saying. You said define it better and, and maybe like the goals of each of these committees, defining the responsibility and the goals, and then you'll have the participation.
I will tell you that with great certainty that if I, in Tom Talks this Friday, put the finance committee members wanted, and if I put some statement in there about to explore the future of a permanent improvement levy to address the needs of the physical facilities of the district, I think that will generate some interest. Again, I'm.
Over, under?
I love it.
That's a long kind of interest.
No, I, but I think you're right. You need people that are going to challenge appropriate, you know, appropriately, because this is something that nobody has answers for.
Right.
And we need to have lots of.
And like you were saying before, like the word finance might deter some people when you don't want it to. You want, you want that different aspects of expertise that people would bring.
Yeah, I know we picked up a couple of people on best because of, we were talking about the renovations and some of that. And, you know, Mr. Potal's kind of jumped on board. I think he's going to be a huge asset to us because you, but if we, I just, if we get two or three other people that have that similar type backgrounds where they have some in-depth knowledge of not only what that work looks like, but relative costs associated with some of those type projects and experience with that, I think that that's, we've got, you know, we've got a lot of people in the district that are, that have construction backgrounds. And a construction background person on a permanent improvement planning committee can be invaluable.
Right. And like business owners that we had that.
Finance committee, permanent improvement.
Yeah, business owners.
I was a call rock.
I'm thinking about my husband.
I was a call rock. Now, I could tell by the look on your face.
I don't think we can work on the same committee. Another quarter.
That's, that's just kind of where I'm at with that.
Absolutely.
Want to throw that out there for the board.
That's good discussion.
So what's your timeline? We've laid out a lot of kind of strategic goals.
Matt and I are, we're going to dedicate in blocks of two hours in the next couple of weeks, a good eight to 10 hours, just to try to take what we've got from the previous plan and let's take a look at those numbers and let's see if we can somehow say wants and needs and do some kind of, you know, Matt did a great job of three different levels of priorities at one point in time on a sheet to see if we can kind of revisit that. That is a starting point. Then if we sit down with other members and we sit down with GPD, that this is where we're coming from administratively on what we think. This is without knowing where the money's coming from or what we're doing, kind of thing on that. And then, then that's when you start bringing people in and maybe start jostling some things around and maybe start working on some finite numbers. And then you also start working toward what's the dollar mark going to look like and how and what timeframe too. I think that's the big thing too, is, you know, we know that we can, we can, we can put a half million dollars in the building every year for 20 years and still continue to do that here, but what are you doing and when you doing it and how you doing it? What, and what needs to get done first with the aging building?
Are we concerned too, like of unforeseen costs, you know, that arise? Like if we, you know, use all of the money on this.
That's the exact conversation I have with a couple of the board members because the cost of the alarm system, and if a boiler blows up on me next month.
Yeah.
I'm grasping at my chest here, a little bit, you know. So that makes me want to pump the brakes a little bit maybe on the, on the alarm system to say, I can get woken up at two o'clock in the morning if I know that my boiler's going to get fixed if something happens to it, so. Either that or I'm going to give them Matt Young's phone number to start calling, I don't know. He doesn't, he tells me he doesn't sleep, so I don't.
I like the idea of maybe doing it in increments too, knowing that the elementary is on a different security system. Like is there a way to just.
Those are questions that I want to have answered. And that's a great question because that comes into that economy of scale too. Because they talked to us way back when about when you've got the security people out here doing it, they want to go end to end and that's sometimes can be a little, that's going to be less expensive than doing this building one year and then say, hey, why don't you come back into the other building next year? Because now we're tying them down over two different summers. Their people, I think the price inherently would go up on something like that. So, and they, they previously talked to us about that way back when. GPD had mentioned some of those issues with breaking things up and, because we had talked about kind of doing this, you know, over a time, over a timeframe, which is why, you know, if you went to any of those seminars down at OSBA, you walked out of them and the one heard, word you heard in all of them was bond issue, bond issue, bond issue. Because that's what the architects and the contractors want. They want to know that they've got $25 million, they're going to come in and start working right now and they're going to work till they're done and is, so they're not waiting for money next year or they're not on to the next plan next year. They want to be able to say, and even if it is a multi-year plan, they want to be able to say, okay, I know I got $25 million, this summer we're doing this, next summer we're doing that, the third summer we're done. And that's the way that they prefer to work, that, that's maybe not what's most beneficial for us as a district, so.
You know, they get it done in three years, we pay it off in the next 30s.
Right.
Yeah, but they also, some of them also said, oh, we have this pipeline that can't.
Well, yeah, some are doing it without.
Any funds.
Yeah, and one of the conversations that a couple of us had was the fact that the GPD proposal is broken down by building rather than by task and priority. Today we're talking about fire in all the buildings, not, but if you look at their reports, you've got to go three, four different places to find all the things that have to do with fire.
Yeah, but for the architectural point of view, that would be the logical way to put a plan together.
That makes sense, but from a community discussion viewpoint, I think we need to rearrange it so that we understand the priorities as topics rather than buildings. You know, so that I don't have, I don't have to go across four or five categories to find one item and then add them all together to figure out what that priority ought to be. Because we set the priorities and it's much easier to do it based on the task rather than the building.
I'm sure if we asked GPD to put it like that.
I'm sure they could.
But we're unique too in that all of our buildings are on one campus. We're all right here in one spot. So sometimes you think about the school, oh, it's just one school, but no, it's not. It's, you know, three different schools, but it's all together as one because it sits right here.
All those are a part of it, you know, and I think it starts with Matt and I. And it's, this isn't, we're both well aware, this isn't a two-hour meeting. This is, this is going to be multiple meetings, us spending some time, us pulling numbers off, moving some numbers around, getting some info from the, from the rest of the administrative team, but this is a lot of Matt and Tom time.
And I think one thing we wanted to do was, you know, we've kind of, you know, if we think back two years ago, late 2019, we were kind of in this mode of talking about permanent improvements, capital improvements, levy, and then COVID hit and we kind of paused and said, all right, we have to, you know, hop over, transition to COVID. COVID lasts longer and, you know, than anyone could have thought. And I think right now we're at the point where we're starting to pivot back. Like right now is kind of the announcement that we're saying, okay, we're ready to jump back into permanent improvements and take a look at it. We don't know what the future holds right now, if, you know, our variants come, but at this point in time, you know, we're transitioning and saying, we're getting back into permanent improvements, we're bringing that discussion into play. You know, COVID, hopefully the worst is behind us, all that's behind us and we're looking ahead.
The building didn't get any younger in the last year and a half. The leak in the, over the cafeteria didn't get fixed and it's, now that we have the supplies that'll get fixed, but so, you know, while a year and a half has passed, none of those things went away, so.
And in that year and a half, we had surprises, surprises along the way too that had to be, get fixed, emergencies things that had to get fixed. So.
Does that conclude your announcement or your comments?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay. Next up, item 17, talking about electing a president pro temp to preside over the 2022 organizational meeting. I'm happy to do it. I know that Mr. Dobbins asked, it's really just one item. You just elect the, you know, the new person, start the meeting, so.
I nominate Wendy Schuker to be the president pro temp at the January organizational meeting, January 2022.
Yes, and I'll second that.
Okay, thank you guys. Any discussion? No. Okay, well, are, do we roll call that?
We can vote on it.
Do we do this now?
You should, yeah.
Okay.
Do we want a motion second? Is it?
I made a motion.
Gary got it. Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mr. Sjaki.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mrs. Schuker.
Aye, and motion passes five zero, and I just read the next item, that was that. So sorry about that, guys.
Can I make a suggestion on 20, Mrs.?
Absolutely.
That's, I'm going to put together a Google Doc and share with four board members, Mr. Sprouse, so you, with the, with the current committees and I'll highlight who's on a committee and then there'll be a place if you want to stay on that committee or go to another committee. And I'm also going to put a space at the bottom for some discussion items about maybe this shouldn't be a committee, maybe we should be, have a committee here, so as opposed to taking, that always tends to be a circular discussion.
Yes, you're being kind.
But then everybody kind of takes a look at that, so then when we come in between now and the January board meeting, we can kind of pull something, some of it may be very cut and dry, some of it we may have to come into January and have some short discussions on the tie, some loose ends up and move forward with it.
And Stephanie, if there's any questions, I mean, any of us I think are available. If you have questions about what some of the committees are, what they do or how often they meet.
Did you get these three sheets? Okay.
Awesome.
Inundating Mrs. Sprouse with.
It's at the bottom.
Emails and.
Committees, the committees are down here on this one.
All right, so board comments, reports. Mr. Naaman, do you want to start with your last board committee report?
Um, sure I will.
Is it okay to start with you?
Yeah, it's okay. It's okay. Now, I really, I truly, yeah, I look at this as a family here, you know, and I, I do, I do think of you extended family. You're the only people that shake me up. I could be in front of 300 people and I get nervous in front of everybody here because I care. And, and so again, thank you very much for the time that I had. I've learned so much from all of you and, and I'll treasure those times for the last four years too, for sure. With that being said, I, congratulations auditor of the year, or, you know, and your award, the state auditor of the audit award this year. So you have a streak going, you got to keep that up, so. Other than that, you know, again, congratulations to Mike Tartara and the basketball team, which is, which is a great job. And lastly, I forgot someone too. I mean, it keeps everybody running here too, but, you know, Dave and Matt too on the IT area, you know, thanks for all the support for the four years and keeping everything up and running from an IT perspective, so, so thank you very much, Dave, wherever you are. are. So, that's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Etter?
I just wanted to say, it's been my privilege to sit next to you here at this school board meeting here, Joe. And you really have been such a dedicated board member and invested in this district, always putting our students first, which is foremost here. Just wanted to thank you publicly for all that you've done for us.
Thank you very much.
And a few more thanks and applause to our art show. I'd like to applaud the students and staff that were involved with the art show. I'm sorry I wasn't able to make it. And what a nice gesture for the donation that they're making to the World Wildlife Fund. I hope our eighth grade students have a great time in Washington DC in a couple months. I know, you know, weren't able to do it in the past year, so I'm looking forward for them. And also want to say a thank you to Mr. Tim Clymer from Barkland Heights Dog Daycare. That was a sizable donation to our art club, and it just is a testament to the great community partnerships that we have here, that someone just from the community decides to make a donation to one of our clubs in our district. And I just think that, you know, that should be acknowledged, and I'm glad that we are acknowledging it, but I just wanted to publicly thank, thank him. Again, congratulations, Matt, and Alexa and Kathy for the state award. And I look forward to seeing the people inducted into the Athletic Hall of Fame. I think I'd like to go to that event on December 17.
Good deal.
I wish everybody happy holidays.
Thank you. Mr. Sutaki?
Again, Joe, thank you for, I've known your family now for about 15 years or so, and thanks to the church down the street. And it's been a pleasure working with you here on the board, and thank you very much for the last four years. It's been a wonderful addition, both on, on the board, finance, auditing, and technology committees. Your contributions have been invaluable. Thank you. The CBCC got a couple of things. At our last meeting, they had maybe about 20 people who were recognized for either as new employees or as employees in new positions, and one of those happened to be somebody that we know, Leabachi, who is now the Administrative Assistant to Admissions. She's moved there from where she was working in the nursing program, doing a similar job there, I believe.
Likes it much better. Likes being around the kids better than, I was, I was over visiting with Lee a little bit, so she's happy to be in the high school office.
Yeah, good, good. We had, and I mentioned when Mr. Janatovic was giving his presentation about how we used to have some of the teachers come in and do some of the key programs that were going on throughout the school. We were trying to do that once a month, once every other month, and then several things hit and we didn't, we kind of got away from that. But when I got involved in the Career Center Board a few years ago, actually when we got our new superintendent, about four years ago now, I said, here's what we used to do in Cogah Heights, and it was really nice, and hopefully we'll get back to it, and maybe you want to consider something like that here. And we are, we got interrupted, COVID interrupted that, but now we are back, and we had a nice presentation from the Electrical Systems Department. This past meeting talked about how their credentials work, how they work with the unions and the industries, get the kids involved, get them out into working with some of the various contractors, and that sort of thing. It was pointed out that that particular program about four years ago had about 10, 12 people in it, maybe less, eight to 10 people in the morning and afternoon. As of this year, they have 24 in the morning, which is max, which means some people probably couldn't get in, and 21 in the afternoon. And this is all as a result of improvements in that program.
Lot of it instructor-driven. New instructors, very dynamic.
New instructor makes a big deal about it. He was very humble in his presentation. The superintendent had to point out and said, you know, this has been a low-key presentation, but let me tell you what's going on down there. And it's certainly one of the stars of the system. We have, as the Vice President of the Technology, I can't remember the exact committee, it's a national committee on technology, I think it's the Ohio Chapter, one of our students, Joshua Snackey.
Snackey.
Snackey is the Vice President of that, of that organization, representing Career Center. One of the things that the Electronic, Electrical Systems did is they went to a local church and volunteered their time to lay piping and cabling for internet, so they can actually have a real internet in the church office rather than, well, they weren't using dial-up, but they were one step ahead of dial-up. And then they also had some interviews on Channel 5 about career pathing. So it's a good, it was a very good presentation that he presented. On a financial viewpoint, the COVID funds have had a dramatic increase in the adult student support, which, since it's all one big budget, really helps the CBCC budget out. So that's, that's very positive. Adult education has been the weak point financially. It's been where we've had to fund, from the general fund, put monies into adult education, and it's been the goal over the last four or five years to get adult education to pay for itself, and I think we've crossed that builder, that barrier now, so. And that's all I have for the senior.
Excellent. Mr. Dobbins?
Thank you. So Mr. Sutaki and I, and Mr. Evans and others, attended the most recent BEST Committee meeting this past Monday. Also, I phoned Senator Dolan's office yesterday to express our objections to HB 126, and given Mr. Evans' update, apparently my comments didn't get through or didn't make that significant of a difference. But I did hear from his office staff that they had been receiving numerous, that his staff acknowledged receiving numerous emails and phone calls that were in objection to HB 126. So the message was being given. I want to congratulate Ms. Ditzel and Ms. Mooney on their service to our district and their impending retirements, and thank them for the many, many years of service, Mr. Mucio and his audit, and his team for their fine audit work. And lastly, Mr. Naaman, I want to thank you for, for your teamwork and your service to the district for these past four years. It's just been invaluable and outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to congratulate you, too, since we all are just very, very pleased and just happy to have you, Mr. Mucio and team. You're all three rock stars. And I wanted to say, you're going to be missed, Mr. Naaman. Not saying I'm not excited, but it's been very, very nice to be able to bounce off a lot of just thoughts and feelings and being in a similar boat, you know, having kids in the district.
Yeah.
But I'm excited for you in this next chapter in your life, and all the things you get to focus on and spend time with your family and all that.
Thank you. I'm going to miss all you, too, for sure. You know, I'm phone call away, though, so.
Absolutely. And I just want to, you know, wish everyone a safe and healthy new year.
I have one last thing. I want to, I want to actually thank the district and the board for the flowers at my father's funeral a couple weeks ago. Thank you all. I greatly appreciate that. And so does my mom and my family, so thank you all very much.
Item number 21, future agenda items. We'll have them packed, right?
Correct.
Organizational meeting.
Starts at 6:00.
Got to remember that.
I'll send, I'll send reminders out.
Wait, the January 5th meeting starts at 6:00 o'clock?
Correct.
So the work sessions are going to be 6:00 o'clock, and the board meetings are going to be 7:00 o'clock.
Correct.
Okay. Maybe we can get a phone group text going that just...
Oh, my, someone needs to remind me.
Yeah, I remember, too.
Oh, you need to get a phone, does you, can you do group texts?
Yeah.
You can?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why are you asking me?
I don't even think I have your cell number. Like, I, when I started, I think it was like a flip, flip phone that you had.
Yeah, I did. You're right.
How am I out here in the meeting?
It was six years ago.
I'm being honest. I don't, I don't think you texted, like, it was, okay. Anyway.
And we lost you at the conference.
Is there anything else for...
Lost me.
No, we lost you.
So just everybody look for the spreadsheet to do so that we're up and ready and so that it's not like a half hour discussion about committees. And if there's any questions, direct them to Mr. Dobbins.
And any of the holes that are left in the, in the schedule, I think...
We won't do that to you.
Welcome.